Okay, welcome everybody. It is 11:01 on May 21st and we are proceeding with a public hearing. Just push the button. Now it's on. I'll begin by reading an opening statement here about regarding this public hearing. The Community Development Department has determined that the approval standards and criteria that apply to the application currently before the planning commissioners follows.
Yes, I got this for you.
You can lift that microphone up too.
Before we get started, I have to formally recuse myself from this process. I myself am a short-term rental owner and this is a direct conflict of interest, actual conflict of interest for me.
Okay.
So I have to recuse myself from discussion and from voting.
Don't move over toward me when you're speaking.
Well, I might tip over. Catch me.
Yeah, so Curry County zoning ordinance, section 3.080, section 3.082, and section 4.300.
Okay, thank you. Evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Curry County Land Development Ordinance, Comprehensive Plan, or other applicable land use and development-related regulations that the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision-maker and the parties the opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least 14 days after the hearing. The planning commission will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specific length of time for a new written testimony or evidence. When the county reopens the record to admit new evidence or testimony, any person may raise new issue that relate to new evidence, testimony, or approval criteria that apply to the matter at issue. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and residential address for public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by county staff. The following time limits are allotted for public testimony. The applicant is allotted 10 minutes. Outside individuals are allowed five minutes. An individual representing a group is 10 minutes. An applicant rebuttal is 10 minutes. Following the close of the hearing, the commission deliberates and renders a decision. If you have questions or do not understand the procedure, please ask me to explain the process. So we will be moving forward with item and file number AP-2501. Have any of you visited the site in question?
Yes.
You have? Okay, good. And you are, mum's the word apparently?
Mum.
Okay. I will stop looking in your direction. Have any, have, Lynn, I guess Commissioner Coker, have you spoken with the applicant or anyone about the application or proposal?
No.
Okay. I have, I believe that you, sir, have come into my office asking questions. And I don't know, I don't know how specific they were, but I believe you've been in my office asking some questions. Yes. No. I'm upstairs, but I think you were looking for information downstairs and you relayed to me some of the comments that you had. Okay. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Commissioners. Zach Moody, contracted planner for Curry County. I do have a couple of things to hand out to you. We did receive one public comment.
No, leave him out. We're gonna send him to go get snacks soon.
And then I'm gonna hand you one other thing that I'm gonna ask to include as an exhibit that was missed in the official record.
I'm giving them four.
Yeah, we're here calling.
Okay, thank you. So you all should have the entire record before you, approximately 90-plus pages. Staff is asking for the certificate of document mailing that was handed to you to be added to the record as exhibit 14. Yes, sir.
Quick question. The document I've got is 158 pages.
Yeah, I'm sorry. 90 pages is where exhibit 13 starts.
Gotcha.
You have the entire record.
Thank you.
Exhibit 14, staff asks for the certification of document mailing to be added as exhibit 14 and the public comment that you received to be added as exhibit 15 to the official record. The application before you was originally denied by planning staff due to not meeting the standards for access. Subsequent to that denial, the access was approved. The applicant submitted an appeal in a timely manner and staff reviewed what was submitted and noted in the updated staff report and the proposed final order for the commission that the standards had now been met and the application should be approved. With that, this is an odd one to have come to a planning commission because it is a standards-based application. The process that the county uses is administrative, which gives the opportunity for public comment. That's why we're here today. Generally speaking, these are yes or no questions and answers. And in this case, that is the case with this, where you either meet the standard or you don't. There's no discretion being applied. So when I say that, we're looking at, is the road 16 feet wide? Yes. Is the, you know, is the short-term rental, you know, this? Yes or no? So you'll hear testimony and you'll be able to make a decision and deliberate to the testimony that you hear plus what you have in the staff report. But staff has prepared a basic staff report outlining the conditions and the proposed final order should the planning commission accept staff's recommendation. So the public comment that you received, that I just handed to you, doesn't state relevant criteria that the application does not meet. So there's, staff's opinion, nothing to address at this point. I guess to be blunt, the fact that it would, should not be allowed is not a criteria in which we can deliberate. And the fact that it would destroy the purpose of the residential zone is not up for comment at this point with the standards-based application.
So repeat that for me one more time. So during public testimony, what we are essentially going to be receiving public testimony on is the criteria of, make that very simple for me.
So does it meet the standards for short-term rental, which are outlined in the proposed final order? And staff has identified where it meets or where it's deficient. And in this case, their, staff believes that there are no deficiencies anymore in the application with the road being brought up to the standards necessary. That was the basis for denial originally.
Okay.
The appeal happened and then the applicant upgraded the road to what staff believes meets the standards. The comments, sorry, go ahead.
So just to be clear on my part, so right now, staff's opinion is that there is no justification to deny this short-term rental going forward.
Correct.
Okay.
And further, other than factual representations, nothing can keep this ship from heading in the direction that you've laid out. So my questions about...
Except our determination.
So my questions may center on the condition and stipulations entitle. How do I handle that?
So you'll hear the public, so when staff's done with the staff report, you'll have the testimony for applicants and support of applicants against, and then of course a rebuttal after that. And then you will have deliberation in which staff can come up and answer questions of the commission and help formulate if you want to change the final order to establish different conditions of approval, we can talk through what that looks like and then we can propose a new final order that they, I guess the planning commission, which we're serving as right now, can approve.
Okay, thanks.
So that was the only other comment that we received. And again, not that the comment's not accepted, but with no relevant criteria that it doesn't meet, it's hard to address.
Right.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any other ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will open the public hearing and we will begin with the applicant. If you would like to step up and, again, name, address, and then you can begin. You have 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. My name's Rebecca LaBeau and I live at, you won't like my street address, 2639 Willowdale Drive in El Dorado Hills, California. Very nervous to get up in here and talk to you guys. Jeff Williams is the property owner and he could not be here today. He's got a medical emergency, so he's in the hospital right now. So I'll be speaking on his behalf. I'm his project manager, so I work for him and take care of projects. I respectfully request that the board reconsider the planner's denial and approve the application as we have addressed the single prior finding of noncompliance as explained, you know, at length in the appeal that we submitted. One, Aggett Way is, does have a drivable surface of 16 feet or greater in width and an unobstructive vertical clearance of no less than 12 feet to ensure that compliance for fire safety standards for the entire length of, you know, from the Highway 101 intersection to the house. And two, Aggett Way meets the standards in place at the time the dedication was approved. And the chief of the Orford Fire Department came out and had a look and confirmed compliance with the applicable standards for fire and safety. We have diligently worked to address the issue and can now confirm that, you know, Aggett Way does meet the applicable standards. Jeff is committed to being a responsible property owner and a good neighbor. We put proactive measures in place to address the concerns voiced by our neighbors' letters. We did read through their comments and don't, we don't want an adversarial relationship. It's just better to be good neighbors. I would also note that Wander, who will operate the home, has good neighbor policies to assure quiet enjoyment of our neighbors. We will ask guests to conserve water. We installed two-way traffic signage when, you know, we widened and cleared the road. You know, in conclusion, Aggett Way does meet all the applicable standards for the short-term rental permit. And it did, the road did meet those standards at its first dedication, was approved by the county and the ODOT. We have presented evidence in the appeal that makes clear that with the road properly maintained and widened and the existence of that Aggett Way turnout that people can use, the property fully complies with all the applicable standards. In light of all this, I respectfully ask that the board reverse the prior denial for the short-term rental permit application for 94288 Aggett Way and approve the permit in all respects, allowing this property to be used as a short-term rental. This helps support the local tourism economy, which is in line with Oregon's vacation rental framework and the Curry County initiative. I get their emails all the time, looks really good, while maintaining the safety and character of the neighborhood with the improvements that Jeff has made. So thank you again for your time, for staff's time, and for everyone for reviewing the application and the appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have citizens testifying in support of the application.
I can go up and repeat myself.
Okay. And citizens that are neutral or testifying against the application.
Would you read those?
Citizens who are neutral or against the application approval. So I will go ahead and start with you, ma'am. If you could come up, name, address, and you have five minutes.
Five minutes, good. I don't have to talk this fast.
No.
Great. All right. My name is Shirley Ketchell and my husband and I are owners of 94272 Aggett Way, Gold Beach, obviously.
Yeah.
All right. First, I wanted to submit this, this objection. I actually went to the office earlier and never closed, so I was gonna get to you.
Oh, okay. So you, this is if you weren't able to be present? So you're able to give comment physically?
I will.
Okay. So there you go.
That we'll address.
Yep.
They're just in basic outline. So I'm really not sure what Rebecca was referencing as the pullout rather than not that was, the lot that is the Department of Transportation, large staging area, or if that's something around Aggett Way. So hopefully she'll address that later. So good morning. As I said, my name is Shirley Ketchell, Aggett Way, owner since December 2013. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband Edward, a co-owner, who is at a pre-scheduled medical appointment today. We vigorously...
I think if you can lean that, yeah, just lean over, just wanna make sure that your voice is heard by the record.
All right. We vigorously oppose the STR appeal under consideration this morning. In addition to the initial oppositions on written record dated 3/7/25, which we submitted, we introduce supplemental consideration today in opposition to the STR appeal. Despite petitioners' mitigation efforts regarding parking and egress concerns identified in the initial denial, we first asked the committee to consider recent permanent population increases along Aggett Way and the potential dangers to the residents. Specifically, the fifth house of five parcels along Aggett Way estimates their construction completion next month. As I recall, the new owners have four, perhaps five, young children. And in addition, my husband and I have custody of our youngest grandchildren, who are ages seven and eight, who attend Riley Creek Elementary. Thus, the three permanent residents of the five parcels along Aggett Way will soon house six to seven school-aged children, four seniors, two adults, and we all will be traversing Aggett Way daily. Although the petitioner's addresses the width of Aggett Way, the Serpentine Drive with blind curves cannot be mitigated. And we believe that that is a continued violation. It can't be mitigated because it is actually deeded property that was deeded back in the 1950s. Thus, a potential risk of these curves of all of those who traverse along on foot or by vehicle. The strangers who, to that community, who might be occupying an STR clearly would not be aware of that. And we've seen many of them come and go at excessive speeds, so we have that concern. Second, STR potential noncompliance with basic regulations and laws potentially impacts the health and safety of the permanent residents, which is significant risk when considering the limited law enforcement personnel in our Curry County, which is under valid consideration right now by residents. We therefore ask the out-of-state STR representative, Ms. Rebecca, how will you and Mr. Williams provide surveillance, immediate oversight, or mitigation of issues related to the STR which might arise? Those violations of the occupancy numbers is one that we have seen, curfew and noise violations, for example, and other concerns which may arise. In conclusion, my husband and I want to be clear, we're not opposed to long-term rentals or the onsite ownerships, of course. If, as the county regulations have clearly stated, there is an option for the owners to have onsite management of a short-term occupants. Certainly, we know that our community needs such short-term occupancy for seasonal and professional workers such as traveling medical personnel to fulfill staff shortages. Simply stated, an STR on Aggett Way is unsafe for permanent residents and does not meet basic community and county housing needs. We therefore urge the county to deny the STR appeal under consideration today. And as you deliberate these basic questions, I ask you to consider this. Is Curry County a community of seasonal entrepreneurs or a long-term, year-round community? We urge county to deny the STR application under consideration, and I thank you for your dedicated service to the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are right on time with your five minutes.
Good thing I didn't write more, man.
Okay. Sir, it's your turn. Name, address, and...
You've got five minutes.
And you've got five minutes.
I've been driving myself nuts trying to make this fit into three. Thank you. This is my assistant, Vanessa White. My name is John Connor. My wife and I live at 94348 Aggett Way. We bought the lot we live in in 2010 and it borders directly on 94288. We're the closest neighbors. We've built and have lived there full-time since 2015, and I am here to protest this second attempt to grab an STR permit. I hope to present three topics: traffic danger, inadequate domestic water supply, and violation of covenants and restrictions laid down in county records. First, this is Highway 101. This is Aggett Way. The 101 Aggett Way intersection is a very minor intersection on this big old highway, built to serve only the four single-family dwelling lots that existed at its time of construction. That is, it's made for very low traffic volume. There are no intersection warning signs even for this on Highway 101. We're being told that it's safe to accept up to 12 tourists and their six additional Two-lane, undivided, you've got northbound and southbound. Can you read most of the print?
Yes.
I hope it's explanatory.
I can't. You can bring it forward if you wish.
Shoulders are narrow with serious drop-offs on both sides.
Of 101?
Of 101. The entrance exit at Aggett Way is only 14 feet wide. That hasn't been increased. It's 14 feet up here, back to 45 or 50 feet from the edge of the highway. This is inadequate because it is crucial to establish two-way traffic flows on this narrow thing. Note, there's a four-by-four wooden post here, close to the highway. This 14-foot has not changed to 16. And it's crucial to establish two-way traffic flow quickly. A lot of tourists drive big old seven, eight-foot wide rams or tundras or caddies when they're staying at this place. They're coming and going on this narrow part. The other part that's not so risky, yeah, was widened back to its original condition after all the construction that went on at our place. But not here, and it's pretty well affixed by other permanent things and by trees and Now, because it's coming right off the highway, it's crucial to have two-way passage here and have it quick. I don't want to meet up with two of the big tourist vehicles on this 14-foot sections. Trying to hash it out, you know, which of them is gonna back up, go forward, allow somebody else to get by. Actually, both gotta get out of the way. I don't want to meet up with these lunker things, trying to sort out who gets out of the way after I've just escaped being mashed by a truck on 101. You gotta get off of this thing quick and the trucks, there's no warning signs, they don't pay much attention to you sometimes, nor do the other cars. Much of the problem is that you can't see traffic coming from 101 south until it gets very close. Say if you're back here by our mailboxes, you look at the highway, we don't see vehicles that are south of this point, which is about 80 feet. Highway speed, that's one second, less than one second, before they pop into view. So it sets up a number of risky situations that we've been forced into, much more recently. It's dangerous. Second, there is little groundwater under Aggett. There are the headcaps of three dry wells, well holes on Lot 288 that were drilled within the last 20 years.
Are those positioned on your map?
No.
Okay.
I ran out of steam.
Okay.
No, they aren't. They are west of us. I'll...
West of your home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. See, we're not down to our actual home here.
Right.
The three dry wells that were drilled in the last 20 years, they're dry. There's another dead one at 94272, which Shirley owns. No water is available from Orford and Naseka Beach to the rest of us on this Aggett Way development. Our successful well was drilled in 2001. The paperwork from that time shows a water vein at about 70 feet down that delivered a capacity of 10 gallons per minute in a one-hour tech, way back then, that's in 2001. In 2012, a former owner of 288, that's Gandy, drilled a fourth hole in this, light at 288. It was about 25 feet from our well. And surprise, they found water at the same level as ours. Even though there were only two Gandys at the time, there was a noticeable drop in the delivery capacity of our well. In early 2016, we had to renovate our well, cost $6,000, and it never really regained its previous steady-state flow. Since 2023, when STR activity has occurred at 288, our well's capacity has decreased at a faster rate. We now have about 110 gallons per day. That's our water supplies. Third...
Has that been certified by a counter? Have you had, has that been verified, the water flow? The current water flow?
By me, but anybody can check it. And I'll tell you how it's done.
I know how to get it done.
Okay.
So I can talk to you about how you might want to do that, but go ahead.
Please do. Third, the property has been used as a short-term rental since at least 2023 without notifying neighbors that it was a short-term rental or, as far as we can tell, applying for a land use permit. We were never informed by either Curry County or the owner's agent, who's here today, that it was being used as a short-term rental. Quoting from the information sheet from Curry County Community Development, 8123, quote, "Operating or advertising a vacation rental without a land use permit after August 1, 2023 may result in double fees, enforcement action, or prohibition on the future use of a dwelling being used as a vacation rental." Thank you for your attention to this strenuous presentation. Again, we're highly opposed to this because it threatens a lot of things.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, if I could. At the beginning of this, you said that, you said that that road is originally built for four lots?
There are only four lots back when it was built.
Okay, how many lots are there now? Was this a new lot that was completed or was that one of the original lots?
Well, these lots... Well, the lot that we bought in 2010 was broken off from one of the bigger lots, which is 288.
Okay. So they created an additional lot?
Yeah, a man to this.
Okay, all right. That was my question.
There are now one, two, three, four, with a new one being built.
He's... So I thought I understood, but no, I don't. So the house that's under construction currently is on a single-family lot?
Yeah, there's nothing going on here. I mean, there's a house being put up.
Correct. And that's the only structure on that single-family lot that you're aware of? I mean...
So it's the only one that...
Okay. So how many lots do we have back there now? Not structures, but how many lots? Five lots.
Five lots.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Thank you, and thank you for time in doing so. So would you like to respond?
Sure.
You were afforded the opportunity to respond. Again, you would have up to 10 minutes to rebut, should you choose.
Sure, thank you. We know who I am for the record, Rebecca LeBeau up here. So to address Shirley's questions first, when I referred to the Aggett Way turnout, I was referring to the really large, she calls it the DOT staging area that's there. It's just this more than 200 feet-long, extremely wide area along Highway 101 that is really great for getting off of Highway 101. I believe that's one of the only roads out there that has something like this to use when entering or exiting Highway 101 as an alternative. It does connect directly to the road. It is gravelled surface and available for people to use. Shirley also mentioned that there are egress concerns, the Serpentine Drive with blind corners, risk and danger to residents. So, I mean, the only reason this bothers anybody is because it's a short-term rental. If I invite people that I know to the house, they don't know that road either. This isn't a problem, I guess, but it's wide enough and safe enough for fire equipment to get there, for people to get there. We did take this into consideration and put up that two-way traffic sign to incite that road etiquette from people, and we do plan on asking people who come there to treat our community, our road, and our neighbors with respect. As far as the health risk goes, surveillance, immediate oversight for curfew and noise, we do have the signs posted for the 24/7 emergency contact, and most short-term rentals don't have an owner onsite. That's not a requirement. And although we are not onsite, I'm out of state, I do have exterior cameras on the house. There is an alarm system. There are electronic locks on the house, and our care team will be Gold Beach-based. So we do have local people who can go immediately to help and take care of things if that needs to be addressed. So we are on top of that. To reply to some of the comments that John had, again, talking about traffic, I think they would have to close most of the roads along Highway 101, access to roads and beaches because they're very similar to how Aggett Way is built. That entrance does measure wider than 14 feet. There is asphalt surface, and then there's gravel on the exterior of that, and that was all marked by a surveyor who came out and surveyed that road. That's been submitted to you as evidence here. That surveyor also noted the 50-foot right-of-way. So this road is owned by all of the property owners there, so if it needed to be widened, then everyone's safety could be ensured by contributing money to go ahead and widen that road. Some trees would come down. That's unfortunate. And then we'd have a very safe entrance to Aggett Way, but I don't think anybody really wants to go and chop all the trees down there. We just want to make sure that people can safely enter and exit the highway. And as far as visibility goes, to my knowledge, the ODOT has not declared that this is a dangerous intersection, so they've kept it open, and so it seems adequate enough for the county to approve and the building department to approve this new home to be built there for those residents and all of their children. So, you know, we seem okay with that, but not okay with short-term rental use for that. So I just want to note that it's, the intersection has been approved, and it's not been declared dangerous, and the surveyor shows the width of that access there. So the wells also, wells and water were approved by the Building and Planning Department. When you get your building permits, occupancy, septic, everything is considered. So it sounds to me more like we're trying to address a bigger planning issue than just us complying with short-term rental requirements. We have met those requirements. I believe that is a separate, different issue, so I think that should be taken into consideration differently, or they need to address the planning and building department there as to why they're approving those wells or water usage. So that's a separate issue there. And there is no data to show that intermittent short-term rental guests would use more water than a household of full-time residents. Just want to point that out as well. So hopefully, that helps address those issues. We, you know, do, again, want to be on good terms with our neighbors. It's very nice to know that they are there, and they do have a beautiful neighborhood, and we just want people to get to enjoy this area, the opportunities that are here for them, and to be respectful of our neighbors while we use this short-term rental here. I think I've addressed everything there, so thank you again for your time.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
A couple.
Regarding the ODOT staging area that you referenced out on 101?
Yes.
What are the permitted uses for that?
I would have to look into the permitted uses. There's no signage posted there saying that it has any special use to it.
Be it open access right-of-way.
And then regarding the efforts on the part of your client to maintain good relationships with the neighbors, give us a context for that period of time when, out of code, there were offerings for short-term rental in the neighborhood, and these weren't declared either to the county or to the neighbors. How does that correspond with your drive to create good, compatible relationships in the neighborhood?
Well, lots of people have stayed at the house.
I'm not talking about lots of people. I'm talking about how do you see that corresponding to your drive to create commodious, comfortable relationships with your neighbors?
Any rentals that happened, it was basically out of ignorance as to how your permitting needed to be handled here. Jeff bought the house to use it for friends, for family. He uses it for employees. He gives time away there. The people who service his vehicles get time there. He gives it away to local auctions. There's a high school in Brookings that got to auction that off and have people come out and stay there. The quilting club ended up getting it and coming out from Brookings to stay here. Girlfriend's kid's school has auction time off. So most of the activity that they have seen has not been rental activity. We initially were maybe misinformed and ignorant as to how it worked, and so we went to set that record straight and went through the application process. We submitted the application in June, on June 10th, and a letter was sent back to us that more information was needed, but it was mailed to the wrong address. So by the time we got that information in September, October, I believe actually, of 2024, we immediately got the information back, again, trying to get that permit to make sure that we could be right with the county, right with neighbors, if we had any rental activity going forward. So our case got, I guess they said it went, it dropped between the cracks as the planning department itself went through pretty disruptive changes here. It fell through the cracks again in December and then was picked up in January, February, so that, you know, brings us here today. So the intention is to, you know, do everything right by the neighbors. We have tried to make sure that we get this set straight and do it correctly. That's really our intention.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I don't have any at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Different day. I can address one of the issues that she was not aware of regarding the DOT staging area.
If you'd like to provide clarification, that's fine.
Yeah, just clarification.
Go ahead.
I'm going to see here. So we've...
You're going to want to be over here, though, so it can be heard.
Right. The recording, correct?
Yes.
So we have owned our property, and my husband has lived there a substantial amount of time since 2013. As I told you, we had to do a lot of renovations, so we became very aware of the traffic and what was going on. In fact, the previous owner of our house was in a collision on 101, and he himself nearly died, and I believe there was a significant injury to the other driver, so that's sad. It does happen. The DOT staging area, Mr. Williams and Rebecca have not been there long enough to understand what it is used for. Any type of large construction, like we see along 101 all the time, will require them to put in lots of gravel. Sometimes they have huge timbers that are there if they're working on one of the wooden bridges or something along the way, and they come and go frequently when that occurs. Now, it doesn't occur a lot, but when it occurs, that area is almost completely full of equipment. Currently, you asked about who might have access to that on a legal standpoint. The only ones that truly use it on a weekly basis is Curry Transfer Recycle. They pull in there close to the tree outcroppings that's along 101, pick up our trash and recyclables, and then go out. The official Aggett Way, so they're not really interrupting any of the staging that goes on there for DOT.
Okay.
So you move your trash out to the staging grounds?
Yes.
And that's where CC...
Yes, right along. There's that tree outcropping there, so it's...
I could see that there was a pathway. There was use there. I was wondering what that was.
Right, right.
Okay.
So that's how that was formed, and that's really... I have other comments, too, but I thought it was much like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we will now close the public hearing, and it is an opportunity now for us to discuss with Mr. Moody as well. Sir, can you sit down, please? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we can add the paper copies of those exhibits that they submitted as Exhibit 16 for Shirley's testimony and Number 17 for John's testimony.
Okay. So now's an opportunity to discuss.
So if I may, just a clarification on some of the noticing that we do to the agencies. This might help clear up whether or not there are issues with the ODOT right-of-way. We do notice the Oregon Department of Transportation. Michael Horowitz is the local ODOT rep that services this area and generally is pretty good about providing comments, and definitely ODOT does, they do comment when there is issues, when there are issues that need to be resolved. In this case, we sent notification to them. They did not provide comment of anything that needed to be corrected, any issues with the access permit. Generally speaking, my experience is, is if ODOT didn't want that additional right-of-way to be used for some purpose, they would have conditioned or recommended a condition of approval to preclude access to that private road from that pullout area. We did not receive anything like that, so we did not condition the application in such a manner.
So it seems like everybody's acknowledging that it's a little tight on Aggett Way with its intersection at 101, and there's almost like this perception we're trying to create that that doesn't matter because we have other space that can be used for ingress and egress to, for safer purposes, on that Aggett Way. But on the other hand, I'm also hearing that the state grounds, that's a moving target in terms of its use and condition, that there is a period of time when safety's not available, and there may be opportunity for safety to be available from time to time. So I'm almost ready to say, I don't, I'm not interested in understanding more about the state lands as it applies to considerations of safe ingress and egress, simply because it comes and goes, that state ground comes and goes in terms of its availability. So discounting the state grounds as a part of the equation of safety, how would you now evaluate the conditions associated with safety for that Aggett Way entrance?
So staff's recommendation didn't have anything to do with the turnout or that extra right-of-way. We specifically look at the driveway width itself. Staff did go out, Rebea went out and did a site visit to ensure that the photos that we received for the record matched what we believe was the case out there. The standard is if you meet the 16-foot driveway width, it doesn't talk about the access point, it just says driveway widths and roads, then the standard is met. Is it a good standard? Maybe not. Two-way traffic usually requires 20 feet. It could be a miss in the code, but the standard is...
Highway speed traffic is 20 feet?
What's that?
Highway street, highway speed traffic?
Just generally speaking, two-foot, or two travel lanes is generally 10-foot in each direction, but that's not what the code says. The code currently says 16 feet, which the standard is met. So that's independent of how other people may access using the other right-of-way area when it's not in use. So we did not include that as part of our evaluation or the recommendation to the commissioners. If you'd like, I can respond to some of the comments if you'd like, unless you just want to ask additional questions.
Go ahead. I mean, I'm eager to hear how you would respond.
Sure.
Because it may fill in gaps for more than just me.
Sure. You know, again, this is a very standards-based application where you either meet the standards or you don't, and there are fire, life, and safety standards that have to be met, and those are verified by the fire department. The access standards, the sewage management standards, those are also met. There is not a specific standard for water. Now, when the houses are approved, as was mentioned, those go through a planning clearance or through a conditional use permit, depending on the zone, in which we ask for a well log to ensure that there's water available, and then they have to demonstrate compliance with DEQ's requirements for septic evaluations and septic systems. So those things are looked at.
So at least from a permitting process, you're satisfied that there's sufficient water, including the use from the new structure, just because of the permitting process for the residential unit?
Well, again, that's not something that's evaluated as part of the short-term rental, the water.
Correct.
Satisfied, I'm not a water expert, so what I would say is, is that, I guess, people that are unfamiliar with well water sources and, you know, the issues with the amounts of water, that can be challenging for people that use rural residential properties, but that's not a standard that's evaluated as short-term rental. Those are things that we, as a board or county, might look at in the future to correct some things in the code that might be helpful to ensure those things meet standards in the future. But for today's hearing, that's not a standard that's evaluated.
Okay. I would also, just in my layman's viewpoint of this, you know, if we were going to get into a water discussion non-related to the STR expectations... into, into a water discussion, non-related to the STR expectations, we would have to have substantial studies that show that long-term residential use is less than short-term rental use in even qualifying the discussion of whether or not water is a purvable actual measure of argument. Right?
Sure.
I mean, otherwise, we're just speculating.
Lots were, lots were being developed.
Correct.
You don't get a building unless you determine that water's available, adequate to the building department requirements, planning department requirements. That, no, those things, obviously, there are issues within our water table that, perhaps might not be addressed by, by the current situation. I know, you know, wells are notoriously fickle and, and different water tables within this county also, also vary radically. But I think, I think all of that is completely extrinsic to this particular, this is a, this is a very narrow review.
So, did you have anything else to add?
Let me just take a look here. There, there was a comment about CCNRs initially, but there wasn't a discussion about it. But we don't regulate CCNRs at the county level. Those are civil matter between property owners. So, if there was a CCNR that restricted short-term rentals in that subdivision or that partition area, though, that becomes a civil matter between property owners. It's not something that the county regulates.
Okay.
So, this should be a question to counsel, then. What supersedes in zoning regulations? The, the zone or the zoning requirements and stipulations or the restrictions found on title?
If the restrictions, if they're, if the restrictions are agreed to within the, within the subdivision that are more strict than the zoning requirements themselves, then those would supersede. As long as, as long, you know, when you buy subject to an existing set of, set of CCNRs, that fact, that would be...
But that wouldn't be necessarily recognized by what's, what's granted at the county level?
Well, our, so our ordinance doesn't take that into account.
That's what I mean, yeah.
And then you would, if, if that's the case, then you would have a private cause of action.
Against who?
Against, against, for example, if you're within a, if you're within a subdivision and it has CCNRs that are restricted, then that, that cause of action is, is by the subdivision property owners within them. And so, then they would sue amongst themselves whether there's a, there's a group that governs those things. This also becomes a problem when, when people modify the CCNRs after, after purchase. And that can, that's, that's when you get into real issues of fact. But in this case, I'm not aware of, I'm not aware, we didn't have any testimony regarding that. So, it, it would be something that would be, you know, if, if there's a CCNR that specifically denies it, that, that we're aware of. The problem with that is making the county responsible to go in, because normally, like when, if somebody hires me as a private attorney to go in and figure out what's legal or not within a specific subdivision, I have to go in and, and, and find, do the entire history of how those CCNRs have been developed, modified, enforced, if they have been enforced, if they're, if they've been selectively enforced, you create, you know, there's a huge problem. And that's an area that the county, we don't wanna get into.
No, we may not. But nevertheless, I see in the petition that the conditions of CCNR as offered by the current owners in the complex, they're saying that the CCNRs do create a fence around the uses that are customary for a residential neighborhood. And my interpretation is that the language is loose enough that it just beckons for an arm wrestling contest of some kind.
Then that's, that's the problem.
That would be for the neighbors to arm wrestle.
When you, when you, when you buy in a subdivision, you walk in, and if you buy in a subdivision, you have to make sure that the CCNRs are acceptable to you because you can find out that there are, there are, you know, severe, if they're not written well or if they've been modified to benefit, say, a particular lot within, within a specific subdivision, so that lot's benefited overall at the expense of others, you have to see that going in. And that's one of the risks of buying, of buying your property. When you, when you're buying property, that's supposedly what you have a real dirt help you with.
Or a lawyer.
Right.
So, what, what we've got here is one property owner doesn't recognize what another property owner recognizes. And that is that the petitioner is willing to say that there's nothing in the CCNRs that your client agreed to when they purchased the land, which would restrict anything that resembles short-term rental. On the other hand, you have your neighbors who bought land under the same CCNRs, and they're saying, "We perceive," in the language of our CCNRs, "that there are stipulations here that protect our interests in a quiet enjoyment of the property." So, you've got two different perspectives here. And I just encourage you to make sure that your owner understands that there is this inherent conflict and there is risk associated with being out of conformance if they were ever litigate.
I do understand that. But I understand that you're pressing that point a lot harder and fully than they did. I think they mentioned it. So, I appreciate you bringing that out so that we have full detail on that, so that we can make sure that, yeah, he gets full awareness of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, just one other thing. I just wanted to note a condition of approval that I did recommend in the staff report to make sure that the access is consistently maintained, that we wanted to have that annual inspection done by the local fire district that is closest to that area or responsible for that area. They would come out and make, ensure that it still met fire safety standards on a yearly basis. And that is really outside of what we, what we would normally do. We would just say it meets the conditions now. But because there were concerns of inadequacies of the driveway initially, we felt that that was a good condition of approval to put in.
I have a question on that. Good.
I, I don't think, right now, yeah. No, thank you, though.
Sure.
So, and with that, that's, that's all I have. I'm able to answer more questions if there are, through deliberation.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Coker, your comments, your ideas?
Well, my concern still remains based on the observations of being out there this last weekend, that it's, it's a tight squeeze to come off 101.
But here's the thing, and this is where I get, this is where I have some issues. Are we gonna regulate that for the homeowners as well? Because right now, there are three of five parcels, one being built on, four seniors, six to seven school-aged children, who will become drivers. Is there a point where we start to regulate who can and cannot live in an area based on, based on parameters in which are very customary in our area of pull-offs of the 101? Agate Way is not the only road that comes directly off the 101. There are hundreds of roads that come directly off the 101. And are we gonna begin to regulate the safety of all those in lieu of ODOT? That's a question that I would have. Because if we're going to regulate this for one property owner, essentially, we are creating a standard that we are going to regulate this for every property owner. And at what point do we say that this is not safe enough to live on?
If you regulate one house on that road, you're gonna regulate them all.
Exactly.
So, one, that's my point. Tag them all and then, then get ready for the suits.
That's my point. So, and then, at what point are we measuring every single road that comes off of the 101 to regulate those livability standards?
Just for a little bit of background, whenever you have a, whenever you create a road access, you have to, you know, it has to be, you have to have it specifically approved by ODOT. They come down and they'll look at it. I've done it, you know, numerous times and I've, I've been successful and I have failed, too. They, they're pretty strict in their, in their, in their parameters. And, you know, that's, this is an existing road and it, it's, it's really not within our, within our, our scope to be looking at that aspect of it. We, our aspect is, it's, it's limited by the, by the width of that road. Now, now, we look at that and we say, "There is a 50-foot right-of-way." That's, you know, if, if we, if we determine that that road is not wide enough, are we... If it, if it meets the standards, then it meets the standards as far as the short-term rental issue. If, if, if the county wants to step in and take control of that road and widen it and, and do, that's a, that's a completely different animal.
What are the, it's, it's a private road. Why would we have to do it? If it's an issue for them, why wouldn't they just go in and pick up five more feet off of both sides and solve the problem?
They should.
Okay.
Right. If, if it's an issue for them, they, they definitely should. And, and, you know, in my experience, you, in my experience, you, you have a bunch of neighbors and a couple of them will wanna do that and a couple of them won't. And if I'm the neighbor, I'd do it. Because then everybody's safer and you, you end up, you end up blading the road wider and you end up putting in maybe a little infrastructure, but then the problem's permanently solved. But, and, and then you, you just don't have to talk to your neighbors after that.
Well, and you don't have any danger on the...
Right.
Or as much danger.
Yeah, there's, I mean, inherent danger. But when we get into that conversation, it much reminds me of Pelican Bay Drive in Harbor, which has been an issue for a long-standing time as a private road that many people want the county to step in and take management and maintenance over, which is not within our...
It's too narrow. We'd spend, we'd spend a couple of million dollars to get started on that.
Yeah.
That's...
But when you open that can...
Right.
That can begins to open. So, you're, sorry, I was, I was commenting on your comments, so continue.
Well, I'm grateful that you in... I think the, the issues that I saw in the application have been, the comments have been responsive, so thanks.
The proposed final order, should the commission choose to accept the recommendation that the staff has provided now, which would be approval of the short-term rental, is on, starts on page three of the report, and that would be the order of record for the commission. It lists all the conditions of approval and it lists the findings of fact demonstrating compliance with the short-term rental code.
And that's on page three?
Begins on page three, correct.
Okay. Well, in the final order and findings of fact? Okay?
Yes.
Well, I think what we need to come to consensus on is, do we, are we, are we prepared to approve with the conditions as recommended by staff? Approve with conditions as amended based on information we have received? Or deny based on the failure to meet the criteria? Personally, I'm prepared to approve with the conditions as recommended by staff, but there's two of us who have to make this decision.
Well, you know, we've got several principles here. We have the current property owners, we have the new property owner, two group, two groups of principles, then we have the county's interest. And our interests can be satisfied by approving this.
Wait, wait, hold it, hold it. Do we have a new property owner?
No, but the property owners are in two groups.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, that's the three, three groups of principles. So, from my perspective, I think our interests have been satisfied and it's okay to sign this. On the other hand, I understand that the interests in the community have not been resolved and are still, there's still a lot of space between them in terms of having a unified neighborhood. And I'm not quite sure how you, you resolve that, but if you don't look forward as opposed to backwards, it's gonna be very difficult to bring any kind of positive solutions. Counsel and my colleagues up here have offered some suggestions, which includes working together as an association to address those residual problems that you've got that are well within the capacities of either the petitioner or the community at large, or just the other homeowners in the area, to bring matters of, have we got the right wells? Have we got the right width on the street? That's all can be accounted for within your own neighborhood or organization, which is beyond what the county is prepared to take on.
As far as property owners go, you know, it's tough, but really, the best thing you can ever do is enter into a road maintenance agreement with all of the neighbors onboard so that, so that everybody understands their, their responsibilities and everybody, so that one person doesn't, if, if someone else does step up and do all the work, which it sounds like that just happened, that sounds okay right now, but in real, in reality, it's inequitable. All, the neighbors should share that evenly. As a, as a person who's been involved in many, many neighborhood fights my whole life, it, you, you, you wanna keep things even as, as you go forward. And that way, you can avoid, because there really is hardly anything worse, and we have people in this room that can attest to that, than having a fight with your neighbors and having discord, discord with your neighbors. And so, I would recommend that as you go forward with this, you know, that, yeah, keep communication up. And, and if you communicate to the people that are staying in the, in the STR, make sure that everybody knows that, that behaving right is a priority. I think that, I think that's your best long-term solution, you know? It's, and not easy. You just have to do it.
So, yes, I would acknowledge the points that you're making, that the, the aspects in which the county is involved have been satisfied. And the other aspects will need to be taken care of. And it, it is difficult because there's a lot of, there's, 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 there's a lot of people who will, who, who will never be satisfied and not in my backyard mentality on, on, on what property owners can and cannot do. There's a lot of people who wanna mitigate and regulate what property owners can and cannot do. And that, if that's the case, then that should be done civilly, in my opinion. So, I'm prepared to approve with the conditions recommended by staff. I will move that we approve with the conditions recommended by staff.
Second?
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Yes.
And yes, myself. And Commissioner Hollinger is abstained.
Thank you for your contribution, Commissioner Hollinger.
That will close this public hearing. And I thank everyone for being...